So I'm a longtime resident of East Palo Alto. I moved here from Oakland, California. Was really happy to find this was an activist community. So I felt right at home going out to meetings with folks about organizing around public safety initially, and then affordable housing and education as well. And doing that organizing through Peninsula Interfaith Action at our St. Francis of Assisi Church, our local organizing committee. During that work, I also served on nonprofit boards, board chair, co-chair of Peninsula Interfaith Action, Chair of EPA Can Do. And so, and also I have staff with One East Palo Alto as a, they were an improvement director. Sorry about the notifications. Okay. The other thing I would add to that really is working outside. I got to know the city councils, various city councils and city managers over the years, and got an insight to how the process works in the city. Because it was really important for us not just to raise up the problems of the folks that were in need, my neighbors, but also, and myself as well, because I'm affected by some of the same issues, but also to learn about solutions. So we did a lot of research that we brought to the city councils and to city staff. A great example of that is Measure C, which modeled the gang task force from San Jose to intervene, to keep our young people out of the system. So after 20 years, 20 plus years of doing that, I feel like it's really important for me now to get on the other side of the mic in the city council.
What does affordable housing look like in East Palo Alto to you when we say you should have more affordable housing?
Well, so I'm using a couple of different lenses, right? I'm a homeowner in East Palo Alto. I have been a renter in East Palo Alto. And so I have a good understanding of the disruption that can come from being a renter and being asked to leave where you lived. At one point, we had probably moved four times in East Palo Alto in the mid 90s before I became homeowners. And it was pretty messy. So what it looks like to me is that stability is really essential to the success of a lot of our neighbors. It makes a huge difference being a homeowner. Right now, we're the home base for my grandson, who's distance learning. He's here because the internet is stable. He has a quiet room where he can study. And we're able to work really closely with him to make sure he's succeeding in school. But affordable housing is more than just making sure folks don't have to pay more than 30% of their rent. Yeah, it's, it's really about a home. So when we say affordable housing, we really probably should say affordable homes. Because that's what families can build on, individuals can recover. So it's a broad range of products that I'd like to have for folks to be able to move into. I think single room occupancy would be great for a lot of our folks that are returning from, from being incarcerated or being system impacted. And so we need to be really more broad minded about who we want to serve and who the, who our neighbors are around us that we want to keep here housed, stably, in a home.
Can you speak on a percentage then? Like how much affordable housing should East Palo Alto have?
That's a really good question. There are, some of the other candidates that are running right now are pretty impressive, homegrown East Palo Alto products that have gone out to college and been successful in their own educational careers and maybe beyond in some cases. But it's still difficult for those folks successful to afford to live here. So when we think about percentages, it has to be a broad range economically. We're an economically diverse community. I tend to want to serve folks that are in the middle to the low, extremely low income, just because the peninsula pushes those folks out. And historically, it's, it's been a goal of East Palo Alto since incorporation to protect and keep a space for folks to be able to develop and grow their skills and their, take their career paths and be, and be people of color in the peninsula. In Silicon Valley now, it's even more evident. But it doesn't mean that we don't want folks, we don't want housing for folks at the slightly higher end too. The problem, I think honestly, is we don't see where our common ground is a lot of this. We should not be fooled by thinking middle class means we're over it. This economy is so out of whack, it doesn't make any sense to separate ourselves by class. We need to think more holistically around that.
Actually, speaking of that, you know, the city's also tracked market rate housing. You know, there's the Sand Hill proposal that will add like 445 apartments. Do you think market rate, market rate housing plays a role in East Palo Alto's future? You know, what sort of role should they play? How much, how much market rate housing should we have? How much low income affordable housing should we have? What's your position on that?
My position really strongly is I appreciate Sand Hill's spirit, what they say publicly. I think the test of that would be if they would be willing to not only replace rent stabilized housing in whatever new construction they would do, but to also meet an inclusionary requirement as well. So it would allow for market rate housing to be developed, but it would also, to me, sort of prorate the idea of how much affordable housing is being placed in the inclusionary. And the thing about the inclusionary, that's where you can meet the broader ranges of income too. I think that opportunity is really there. We also have to be honest, Costa Hawkins makes it really difficult on, on even the rent stabilized housing being that effective. So I would just encourage folks to vote yes on Prop 21 while we're talking as a way to help resolve that issue. But definitely, if Sand Hill really is of the spirit, they want to support East Palo Alto and they've worked with this, and in a lot of ways they've done that to be fair. But fighting the inclusionary requirement that the city's putting on whatever new development that they do, I think belies that issue. Somehow there has to be a balance between the return of investment for the stakeholders in Sand Hill by recognizing that the renters too are also stakeholders in the same.
I've heard that some residents express concern about, you know, with these new housing, these market rate housing coming to place, you know, will I be displaced, displaced, especially among renters? I'm wondering if you sort of share that concern? And if you do, how we ensure something like this wouldn't happen where, you know, longtime residents, renters are pushed out?
Yeah, and to be honest, the leverage of relocation benefits, or rather the encouragement of relocation benefits may seem really worthwhile if you're a renter. It's like, if I get this money to move, why would I wait around for the construction to be completed or anything like that? Maybe I can just go on with my life. There is that, that struggle for renters head on. I would say the concern for me would be retaining the flavor and the cultural diversity that we have here in East Palo Alto. And I think we really need to look at that inclusionary zoning piece. I'm wondering if it's going to be all rental houses or if they're thinking about converting some to owner. And that may be a way to offset the cost of inclusionary where it's an affordable homeownership opportunity, even if it's a condo. That may be another way to deal with this problem too.
Where do you see commercial development going in EPA?
So there's a Ravenswood Business District specific plan, which was worked on a couple of years ago. I actually organized around bringing parents, especially primary Spanish speaking parents to those meetings to participate. And I thought we laid out a good plan. I like the idea of the floor area ratio limiting how much construction could be done. We also thought wisely about mixed use where there's residential in that development as well and subsidized business spaces, semi industrial places where vocations or like car repair kind of places can, can also be a part of that mix. So that it retained the cachet where you might want to locate your businesses close to Silicon Valley, near the Baylands and all of that. But it also retained a lot of the services that we need here in East Palo Alto, especially for entrepreneurs who, you know, maybe doing restaurants and that sort of thing, which works really well in our community. You have some really great restaurants in fact.
Do you know how you would maintain that sort of, those type of businesses in-house while you pursue for the commercial development?
Yeah, so the commercial development will be helpful in a lot of ways as far as infrastructure wise, developer fees to cover the costs of that expanded infrastructure. And that expansion is helpful for us in a couple of ways. If we're building additional affordable housing, like the expansion in Light Treaty or what's coming up on 965 Weeks with the city money that was garnered from the Facebook negotiations, we are going to have to do something about the sanitary district and the infrastructure. And so that construction in the, in Bay Road and Pogus along that area would be really, I think it's synergistic. So what they have to do commercially to put in their office buildings and widening that pipeline would help also affordable housing construction. As you know, in 2018, we passed Measure HH, knocked on doors for that, and really looking forward to developing those career ladder paths with the companies that would come in. And that's, that's one concern I have, which is one of the reasons I'm running a city council. It's just taking a long time to get that off. Especially the career ladder piece. We haven't yet hired a consultant to do the research on what the best practices is on doing that. So we really need to get ahead of the construction plan and the development of those projects to make sure that we have folks in the pipeline ready for those paid internships that we go measure.
Yeah, let's talk about Measure HH, because you mentioned before that that's one of your concerns. You want to ensure that East Palo Alto residents specifically see the fruits of that measure, specifically the job pipeline that you mentioned. How do you do that?
So when you ask the question, I just want to rephrase. Definitely a career pathway. It's about development and growth. And so the way to do that is to partner with Ravenswood School District, Sequoia High School District, and then the Community College District as well to talk to the companies that are probably going to be coming in or tech companies about how would we develop these career paths? Would it be paid internship summer or year round? Would two-year degrees suffice as long as they get a couple of years? Kind of like similar to what you would do in a vocation around journeyman. There's that part of it. And then the other side of the Measure HH is not just office or tech jobs, but also construction and building maintenance. And so the building maintenance should be around. Hopefully, we're building at least gold or platinum, green buildings where folks are learning that technology, which is also becoming more and more wanted by construction companies. It's a really valuable skill sets to have.
I'm wondering what sort of relationship you think East Palo Alto should have with tech companies? Do you think we should seek out more tech companies to move into the city?
It's a, it's a situation, it's a relationship with tension. So we may have to speak up and be strong about our part, but I think we should acknowledge, just as we should acknowledge with developers, some developers are really conscientious about working with this. And they provide, such as like Sabato, what they're doing with Ravenswood Business District and building space for job training. Two institutions that have been really helpful for us here in East Palo Alto. So when I think about those companies, I kind of have a personal take on it too. I have relatives who work for Facebook who are paid to stay home during the COVID so that they can stay healthy. I think that is a really smart way to deal with folks and not exacerbate the problems of poverty that existed before COVID, but were compounded by COVID. So I think we need to be honest with folks. If they're, if they're really stepping up in the, in the tech industry, but also keeping our eyes wide open about making sure that the relationship is always reciprocal.
Yeah, reciprocal. What does that mean? Do you think tech companies should contribute financially to say building or rebuilding cities' infrastructure? How much should they, should they actually contribute when they come into the city?
You know, it makes me think of the myth of the captains of industry back in the, like the golden age that were raised, lifting up all the workers. And it was pretty shady unless, unless folks, workers organized and became a union and actually got something out of that process. Those captains of industries were pretty much just little bit, they were treating their workers a little bit above slaves. So what I would like to see is the myth become a reality and the tech companies be those captains of industries that realize they actually do benefit from an uplift of the, of the society around them and to contribute to that. I know there's angel investors or folks that do philanthropic work, and, and I encourage that to continue, but also to be, to consider something like a venture philanthropy, right? Where, where you're actually starting at the ground level with folks, which means you're in an active listening relationship with them. It's not a downward way. The best example I could think of it is Haas Center of Public Service at Stanford. When it was, when the director was Nadine Haas, and she always taught her young people, she said, you're Stanford, you're still students, you don't have a lot of life experiences. When you go into a community, you have to realize they are the experts about their community. And you have to hear them out and then work with them and support a lot of their ideas. I think that's the point of view that tech companies should be willing to take as well.
Hearing them out is one thing, but actually just contributing like, hey, here's money to rebuild a part of the city. Do you think tech companies should be doing that?
Absolutely, they should. And I would say that our initial relationship with Facebook was, was contested. We actually worked with public advocates or pro bono legal service to get to the point of, okay, here's $20 million first. And we are absolutely clear that $20 million was an easy check for Facebook to write. But not just Facebook, also Gilead, Shannon Tech, the other industries as well. So maybe it's not money directly, but it goes back to the Measure HH pipeline and really opening up to, they want diversity in the workforce and they want to support that. I've seen plenty of Black Lives Matter information or language websites of lots of tech companies around the peninsula. And would say that you gotta put your money, I mean, you gotta put some action along with those words. And that equity piece about livable technical wages and the opportunities there, there's definitely ways they can partner with the school districts and the college districts to make that happen.
This is from one resident. Do you have any ideas to increase the city's all around resiliency during COVID-19 and the economic pressures it has presented?
The city's definitely been ahead of the county on a lot of this work around the economic impact about keeping folks in their homes. But I would add the wrinkle to that is our small town has a lot of private landlords who are renting rooms who are not aware, are not aware or don't care about those rules about not evicting folks. I personally have been helping some folks around homelessness and placement through St. Vincent de Paul. But the city, for the most part, is definitely ahead of the curve in the way that we were with rent stabilization, about the needs, the economic needs. As far as the healthcare, I've been contacted by city staff to try to get the word out. So I know that city staff is working hard on trying to get folks tested. I'm not sure that the city's pushed the county enough on resources. Although East Palo Alto has had testing much longer than, say, the Bell Haven area of Menlo Park. So there's definitely an advocacy piece that needs to happen more so with the county for resources. However, we also have the Ravenswood Clinic, which has resources too. And there's probably a discussion that needs to be had with Luisa Bohada, the CEO of the Ravenswood Health Clinic, about how we can coordinate our services to be more effective.
Do you think the city should financially aid renters? You know, there's, the eviction moratorium for the city ended on September 30th. I know some can rely on the Tenac Act, but that still requires them to pay at least 25% of rental payments. Do you think the city should help renters pay their rent back?
Well, so my regular job is I'm a housing organizing, I'm an organizing director with the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo. And so in that work, I've learned that the city of East Palo Alto has requested money from Samaritan House and helped coordinate some funding to come in from the, from donators. But it's a difficult task, but where we can, we should. I think every, every bucket that's available for renters is essential. There is the Mission Asset Fund for folks that are undocumented, which has like a 48-hour turnaround or $1,000 that can be used towards that. Samaritan House is using money donated from Sabato and others to try to do this. Anything that we can bring in through our relationships specifically for East Palo Alto residents, we should do. I don't know if a promise can be made, but I think the promise of the effort could be publicized probably.
And you know, one of the sort of populations of East Palo Alto that's highly impacted by COVID-19 is senior citizens. I'm wondering if you have any plans to sort of increase resources or maybe bolster current resources, like East Palo Alto Senior Citizen Center? Do you have any ideas on how you can support that group of people?
We should go door to door at this point. And they need to be groups of folks that, that are, one, are healthy, but two, represent the community. So there's a level of trust when somebody comes to the door. If you're a primary Spanish speaker or a strong Tongan or someone speaker, really would be helpful to have along with young African Americans and Latinos as well. So that door to door would be a way to assess where folks are at and also to disseminate or distribute information to folks that they may need. And it would be a way for us to assess what the need is really directly. And there's certainly plenty of, there's some synergy around what was done with the census that can happen. Organizations like Anamataki, Polynesian Voices, West Rikasa. And I wouldn't even say the Boys and Girls Club where the distribution is happening of the food regularly. Are ways, are places where we can find those volunteers to get out.
Some of the concerns residents have is that EPA doesn't have enough access to healthy food alternatives, maybe organic produce. Some people call the EPA a food swamp. I'm wondering, do you have any plans to sort of ensure residents, you know, people who might not have access to Trader Joe's or Whole Foods? How can you promise that you can provide fresh produce and healthy food alternatives?
The COVID is making it difficult for things like our, our farmer's market, which takes place at Ravenswood. Some years back, I was in AmeriCorps with Collective Roots when we kind of initiated that process and teaching folks garden for organic gardening. A community garden would be part of the answer to that, but also encouraging folks to, we have marvelous soil. I made the mistake of putting tomatoes in my compost and I had tomatoes for like months, just growing. So even during the COVID, hopefully we can, we can help educate our, well, share that information about growing, but also find a way to keep the, the farmer's market produce being circulated. I spoke earlier about St. Vincent de Paul. We usually put fresh vegetables in what we send out in our boxes to folks. And, and the need is growing, but fortunately EHP and another organization are helping out. And I just want to give a shout out to Lisa Gochet, Congress, I mean, council member, who is regularly there making sure folks are getting fed. So I think a little applause for that.
What do you think the EPA's police department, what role do you think they should have in the city moving forward? Given this whole national conversation going on right now?
I would say first that the community has a good, strong relationship with being clear about what they think they need from the police department. And so example of that was they wanted to have tasers as an alternative to resolving price problems. And the community definitely did not respect that idea at all. We were pretty clear and adamant about that. Even I spoke against it because I know people are getting killed even with tasers. And so that an alternative way of de-escalating problems needs to happen. I think about the leadership that we've shown around economic diversity and protecting folks as a way we should look at the police department. I would very much like to see the police training, the cadet time be extended and build up the curriculum there, not once they're hired, but even before they're hired. The expectation clearly said that you have to learn de-escalation tactics. You have to be aware, be aware of bias. And so to build that into the training before, as you're a cadet, before you even come to East Palo Alto. So I would love to have that conversation with Chief Pardini. And working with him in the past, I found him very receptive and thoughtful. And I have to give, give him some credit to, things have definitely chilled out. That's not all to the police department. A lot of that had to do with the Measure C work that was done around intervention and developing programs and getting organizations to collaborate with each other around our young people, organizations like Living, One East Palo Alto and others. Yeah, but definitely would like to see us take the lead on how to, how to have that conversation with the PD and some really concrete steps about what should happen.
Beyond what schools can provide and beyond the upcoming EPA Arts Center, which I'm aware of, what sort of resources do you think the city should invest in for the youth community of EPA?
EPA Arts Center, I had an interesting conversation with the executive director where she sees a connection or an intersection between arts and sciences. So I would really like to build that out in some of my canvassing. I've spoken to young people who are like in these biomedical fields who are recent residents of East Palo Alto. And they're very interested in working with young people around that. I think if we could partner EPA Arts around some of the sciences and the connection with Cooley Landing, there's, there's some synergy there too. The biological sciences are great. What you know about math really kind of translates from music about spatial references that has to do with math. The other around that is places where young folks can congregate and kind of be themselves in a positive manner that sort of feeds their creativity. I really miss the hip hop history program from the Mural Arts Project that Sonia had, Sonia Clacarera back in the day. But really see a way to bring possibly like Street Code Academy and the arts together.
Speaking with some residents, they've expressed that they don't like that there's a lack of sidewalks in many parts of East Palo Alto and lampposts. I'm wondering, do you think you can, do you plan on addressing those issues during your term if you're elected?
I'm going to say this, and I know this is probably going to be one of the first things that folks are going to be ticked off with me about, but we need to fix a way. You cannot park on the sidewalk. I get so nervous watching moms or kids walking in the street. I do like the rural aspect of East Palo Alto. Like our light designation is one of the reasons it's so dark is because we have a rural designation for lighting right now. And the answer, I would think, it would be maybe you can park on one side of the street six months of the year. Maybe you could park on the other side of the street the other six months to allow people to park. However, I also understand that one of the reasons, and it's, it all comes back to economics, which is why I think classes, class and race have to be considered as we make any decisions, is lots of times people have so many vehicles because they have to overcrowd housing. Earlier, you talked about seniors in concern. Multi-generational housing is a really big concern around COVID. And it's something lots, lots of our cultures do, but right now it's just a dangerous thing for, for older folks to have, you know, maybe their children have to come back home and then bring their children with them into their, their home. But yeah, I am concerned about that. Safe pathways to school has been done on a couple of streets in the midtown area. And I was just over there this week on Addison and noticed that folks are now parking on the sidewalks that were paved over specifically so children can go to Caesar Chavez safely. So there's still work to be done around that. And some of it's just education. You know, maybe there's no parking during like 7:30 to 9:30 in the morning and then no parking between 2:00 and 4:00 so that children can safely walk.
I'm curious, and where do you think those people should park?
Well, hopefully after the COVID's been controlled a bit, maybe they can go back to work, drive their vehicles or park wisely. I mean, there's some things to do, like maybe we need to limit the size of our yards. Maybe what's green grass is only 10 by 10, and then the rest is gravel or something to allow for additional park. Measure V? Yes.
One of the reasons in comments I've said One of the reasons incumbents have said it's important for them to stay on the council is because they're familiar with how the city council runs, they're familiar with the projects they've already achieved and the ones they want to continue working on. But why do you think the city should vote for someone new come November? What's missing on the council right now that you think you should fill in?
I think it's, coming from the outside, I think it's a level of comfort with a very slow pace of decision making and action taking. The fact that Measure HH has been around for two years and we haven't hired a consultant, it's a big deal. Another example of that was with Measure C back in the late two thousands where the police chief had to come to the city council after two years to say, where's the police's money portion of Measure C funds? It hadn't moved. And that's because the city manager at that time, not the current city manager, had not been really moving. So it's good to have a good understanding of what's going on, and I think I show that personally. But the the other side is someone that's not comfortable with that with that pace, that may want to do things, move things along faster and be more responsive to what the community's needs are.